This time I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session to order. It is September 13th, 2022, and y'all help me out with elected officials. Let's see. Welcome, invited guests, and everyone, thank you for being here and taking part in your county government. If you've got any mobile devices on, this would be a good time to silence those. And do we have a list from the marshal this morning? Thank you, sir. Let's stand and have our invocation and pledge the flag. Gracious God, we're thankful to be here today. We're thankful for life. We thank you for love and your mercy and grace, and we would seek your guidance in our meeting this morning as we recognize all our blessings. We do lift up the families of all the families that were affected by 9/11, by the 3,000-plus deaths and the kids that have grown up without parents that sacrificed their lives in that whole ordeal. And may we remember that it's not always a peaceful world, and we need to be ready to defend this country because freedom isn't free. We do thank you for our department heads here and all the work that they've done in preparation for this meeting and that they do every day. So we just pray for protection over all our families and for this county to be everything that you would want it to be by following your guidance and by really you as the leader of what goes on in this county. Pray these things in Christ's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Team Paulding, wait, let me back up to the minutes. The August 23rd, 2022 work session minutes and the August 23rd, 2022 board meeting minutes are available for review located on that back table. Under Team Paulding and the announcements, we have Employee of the Month Candace Maxwell with the Board of Assessors. So we enjoyed surprising her last week.
Candace was nominated by members of our appraisal staff. She was nominated because of her excellent customer service, her positive attitude, and the assistance she provides to all of our staff. Candace is an appraisal technician. What her position is, is she supports the appraisal staff and assists the customers as whatever they need in our office. She's one of our frontline staff. Anything that they need, she's willing and able to help. She generally cares for each and every citizen that comes through our office. She's not only looking at what their questions are, but how maybe the government or the assessor's office can help those people in whatever their needs are. Candace has been in our office for seven years. She started off in our mapping division. She worked there for a couple of years and then showed an interest in appraisals. She started attending appraisal classes, and when a position came open, she jumped on it, and she's excelled ever since. She's always got a bubbly personality. She's got a genuine servant's heart. She's always concerned about the citizens and about her fellow coworkers. She's always willing to jump in and help with whatever needs to be done in the office. On behalf of all of our staff, we're also proud of you. You're well-deserving of this, and we're very proud that you've been awarded the Employee of the Month. Thank you for everything that you do for our office.
Congratulations, Candace. That was fun. I think about the whole office was out to share that with her. Paulding County Fire and Rescue would like to make an award this morning, a presentation to firefighters Jeremy Knoll and Christopher Ward for the heroic actions that they took that resulted in saving a life on June 24th. They'll also be recognizing other members of the department for their actions as well. Chief Pelfry?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us to do this here out in public. We wanted to recognize these individuals for their heroic actions and all the teamwork that we had as well. June 24th was one of those calls that you don't see in your career very much. I've never seen it, and I've been doing it for almost 30 years, and it was just amazing to see them come together and what they did. So we have Lieutenant Steve Mates is here. He's going to read the presentation for us, and I would like for firefighter Knoll and firefighter Ward to come forward, please.
Thank you. So I'll give you a preamble. Police officers, sheriff's deputies, firefighters gladly risk their lives to protect citizens. They go into these untenable situations when other people are running out, whether it's a house fire, domestic violence, an active shooter, whatever. These guys and women in uniform put their own lives at risk every day. But the truth is, none of them want to be recognized for it, and if you ask any of them, I can see the body language and the nods in the front, they'll say, "I just did my job," or "It's a privilege." But there's a time to recognize them, and today, FAO Jeremy Knoll and firefighter Chris Ward are receiving the county's highest honor, Medal of Valor, only for the second time it's ever been issued by our department. So indulge me for a minute, and I'll give you a little details on what happened that night. As chief said, Friday, June 24th at 9:20 p.m., 911 received a call from the home adjacent to 776 Woodwind Drive in the Yorkville community. According to the caller, three children who lived at the home next door escaped, ran to his house, told him domestic violence was occurring inside the home. Four siblings, other siblings were trapped, and their mother had set the house on fire. Another caller reported hearing gunshots, and it was believed that someone had a weapon on the scene. At the time these units were responding, all of that was relayed to them by radio. So they knew exactly, or thought they knew exactly what they were getting into. And just an FYI, in the fire service around the world, if there's domestic violence or weapons involved, fire and ambulance have a protocol to stage a couple of blocks away and wait for sheriff's deputies or police to deem the scene safe for them to enter. Paulding County Engine 7, Knoll and Ward absolutely could have done that that night. They could have staged and waited for SO, but they thought and knew that children were involved, and they proceeded directly to the house. So seven minutes after they were dispatched, they arrived. They reported on the radio to other units that flames were visible from the second level, bystanders were in the front yard frantic, saying that children were trapped in the home. So without hesitation, these gentlemen immediately entered the home, initiated interior search and rescue operations, and began rescuing victims. Over the course of the next several minutes, many other fire, sheriff, and EMS units arrived, and they all joined in the operation. In all, they rescued four pediatric patients from the fire. Sadly, two were pronounced on the scene. Another was transported emergency by ambulance to Cobb Hospital, later transferred to the burn unit at Grady, and he also died unfortunately. But in this most horrific and tragic scene, and because of the quick actions of these gentlemen, one child who was rescued from the home was flown from helicopter, by helicopter, from the scene to Grady, and he's still alive today. He's got a long road to recovery, but he's already been transferred from Grady to a rehab facility where he's getting great care. Had Engine 7 not made the decision to proceed to the scene without any hesitation and without regard to their own safety, he would not be alive today. So again, for the second time in the history of our department, thank you, FAO Knoll and firefighter Chris Ward, and you're being presented with the Medal of Valor. Couple of more minutes. Obviously, there was a significant loss of life on the call. It was tragic, but one life was saved thanks to the amazing teamwork, not just from the fire department, but from the sheriff, from EMS, from Metro Ambulance Service, from Airlife 5 that flew this child to Grady. It's unbelievable. And most importantly, the other firefighters who are standing in the room today deserve recognition. So as I say your name, if you'd come up to the front. Division Chief of EMS, Tim King, lives nearby that house. He was not on duty. He was listening to his radio. He heard the nature of the call. It was dispatched. He arrived on the scene just a minute behind Engine 7, and he immediately established incident command and took responsibility and directed everybody else that was responding at the time. Engine 12, the second fire suppression apparatus to respond, Lieutenant Jeff McKenzie joined Engine 7's crew inside the home, conducting search and rescue operations. And FAO Stephen Harris, also an advanced EMT, began rendering medical care to the first child that was rescued to the front yard. Battalion Chief Chris Robinson arrived and assumed incident command from Chief King. Chief King, also an experienced paramedic, established a medical sector and directed care for all of the victims that were being treated on the scene. ALS Rescue 4, paramedic Brad Johnson and firefighter Ryan LeClaire arrived and began treating multiple victims in the front yard. Squad 1, led by Captain David Parsons, along with FAO Ray Rokemore, firefighter Riley Akri, firefighter Hunter Raikstra arrived and entered the home to search for additional victims. Engine 1, led by Lieutenant Josh Collier with firefighter Jessica North, and Truck 11 with Captain Dan Tibbetts and FAO Corey Jones arrived on the scene and joined medical and fire suppression operations. Today, they're receiving commendation for their collective exemplary actions that night that result in multiple victims being removed from a working house fire and one child being saved under the most extraordinary and unusual circumstances. Your actions that night are in keeping with the highest standards of the fire service. Thank you for your service to the community and the citizens of Paulding County.
Thank you, Chief Pelfry, and your wonderful team. We're so proud of all of this team. No invited guest, bid awards, item number two is to award the Chester Harris Drive-North Intersection Project to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder Summit Construction and Development in the amount of $213,093. Located in Post 4, and Mr. George Jones to report.
Good morning. We are hopeful they're responsible, honestly, so. The Finance Department advertised the Department of Transportation contract, also known as the Chester Harris Drive-North Intersection Improvement Project. The project is located in Post 4. Project consists of adding a right turn lane and a five-foot sidewalk off of Chester Harris Drive-North between Old Cartersville Road and East Chestnut Way, West Chestnut Way. The right turn lane will allow, like I said, a separate right turn lane, an exclusive right turn lane, and a shared left-through lane, which will separate those right turners so they will be able to leave the subdivision a little faster without being backed up by the left-turning-through traffic. Capacity analysis indicate once the subdivision is completely built out, those delays for the right-turning traffic will be reduced from 50 seconds per vehicle down to 15 seconds per vehicle, and the queue lengths will reduce from 135 feet down to 65 feet. The bids for this project were open on August 26th of this year. DOT has reviewed the three bids submitted and recommends award to the lowest responsive bidder Summit Construction and Development LLC in the amount of $213,093. This bid was over the original's engineer's estimate by 12.6%, however, with the pricing that we have now, it's essentially in line with current market prices, and this bid was 12.4% lower than the next lowest bid. Funding for this project will be allocated from SPOST, and we gave a 12-month construction timeframe for this project. Obviously, it will not take 12 months to construct it, however, we wanted to give a large window so we didn't want to have prices basically increase just because there was a short timeline given for construction. With that, I'll be able to answer any questions you may have.
No one will get started, George?
I do not. We're going to have to obviously get the contract documents signed, get a pre-construction meeting at that point. We'll go forward with determining when they're expecting to start the work. Again, it should not take a whole lot of time once they start. Again, I think this will probably be something they try to fit in with their other work. It's a pretty small project.
The communication with the individuals in that Chestnut Hills, yeah, one thing I want to say, I appreciate it. I know you've met with them multiple times alone myself, and I'm sure they're ecstatic of finally getting this project going on, but...
It's a good project. Hopefully, everybody will be satisfied once it's done. As you know, you know, sometimes things go a little slowly, and with construction, there's delays, and it's not always the most pleasing aesthetics, but hopefully, once it's done, everybody will be happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe you said SPOST, the magic word, SPOST?
Yes, sir. This is another one of those projects that is funded by SPOST.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
No public participation on agenda items under consent agenda, consideration of a couple of items here. Item three is to authorize the chairman to sign a memorandum of agreement with the George Department of Transportation in the amount of $15,000 for GDOT to provide the project oversight for the Hiram-Sudi State Route 120 Connector, the Davis Mill Road North, and the Davis Mill Road South Intersection Improvement. It's located in Post 1. And the next item, item number four, is to declare the items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through auction or trade. And I'm not going to read out the list, but that's also located on the back table if you want to see the four vehicles that make up that surplus list. And item number five, agenda item, is approve the request to retire and surplus Detective Stacy Foal's service weapon Glock Model 21, serial number SWF 635, cost of $469. Would any of the commissioners like to place any of those items for regular business? Hearing none, we'll leave them right where they are on the consent agenda. Under old business, we have none. Under new business, item number six is discuss action to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget amendments, which is something we do every year. And Ms. Pollard to report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a routine process, so every year we close the year. Last meeting, we adopted the 2023 budget, actually not last meeting, the meeting before, and now we're going back to the 2022 budget. So first, I'd like to give an explanation as to why that is. A lot of your special revenue funds, you're required by law to have a budget for. However, those funds are held by the constitutional officers, and so those accounts, revenues are submitted to us the first part of July. I don't always know what those are until we get the bank statements and the documents to adopt that budget. So that's kind of why we run a little bit behind for the FY22 budget. The general fund and everything that's been done for the county, this is accumulation of all of those financial transactions and puts them all into one document so that they're prepared for our annual report that should be issued a little later this year. And it'll have an original, and then it'll have the final, and then it'll have an actual budget. So in the back, I have, let me get this screen so that it's easier to follow along. In the back, I have two documents. One looks like this, and it's the actual budget amendments. That's what's before you today. And then I have an update for 2022, and that's what's been, we're going to reference that a little bit. Let's see if we can see these. Okay, so the budget amendments, that's this document. Basically, you are, the revenues is this first section, and starting with the left on the general fund side, we have received more revenues than what we had actually anticipated. One of the larger ones of that receipt is in other taxes. That is comprised of your loss tax, your title of loren tax, and there's a small real estate transfer tax, which is from the sale of property that's generated about $400,000. So that's where the differences are in the growth. Mind you, that's also how you rolled back the millage rate in early August is because of those additional revenues. Going across the top, you have, as I mentioned, you're required to adopt a budget for every fund, special revenue funds throughout the county. So some of those are the fire tax fund. So you have the property tax that's assessed specifically for fire. It's known as a special district, but it encompasses all of Paulding. And then you have 911, the special courts. Those are your constitutional officers in many cases. Your enterprise solid waste, that is an enterprise fund, so it is a flexible budget. It's not restricted to this. It's restricted by the monies coming in and the monies going out and what you've approved. Your SPOST, we did have a small increase, oh, well, actually, we had a large increase, a couple of million dollars increase to the SPOST tax. That's the additional 1% tax. Debt service, we didn't have a lot of change. CIP, those are for construction projects. We're closing out two construction projects this year, one's for the reservoir and one's for the jail, and so those are in this amendment as well. And then you have, this one's new, it's ARPA funds. So last year, the federal government had awarded ARPA funds by formula to Paulding and to all the other local jurisdictions. We received half the money last year, so we received 16 million last year, and we received the other 16 million this year. Our plan to fund those projects is for water and sewer. We do not have any expenses for those yet, but you'll have quite a few expenses in this upcoming year. And as you've seen, you've awarded some projects. We just, they were late in the year, and so those expenses are beginning to come in, but you'll see those active in 2023. Okay, that said, the next page is, we go to expenses. I've highlighted some of these, this, just for reference for myself. There aren't a lot of changes. So over the course of the year, we have, we issue purchase orders at the end of the year. If those purchase orders or encumbrances are not actually finalized, then we will roll those from 2023 to, I mean, 2022 to 2023. This particular year, we have seven point, almost eight million dollars that we'll roll into. So that means right off the bat, your budget from 2023 that you adopted is actually eight million higher than what you had adopted because those encumbrances were from the previous year, from fiscal year 2022. You'll see that in some of the explanations. Most everything, I did not reduce, most of your departments are coming in under budget. You have a few that are over. Those are basically your highlighted ones that I have here, and there are reasons for those expenditures. The only one that I do have highlighted is voter registration. I shouldn't have that highlighted. That was only done for rounding purposes, the only change. They're under budget. If you look at the expense report, if you look at this expense report on page one, the elections budget, you'll see that it was $1,35,140, and that it was adjusted for rounding down to $1,35,100. So it was adjusted down, and then their actual was under that, so they were under budget as well. Okay. Drug and Accountability Court, that one increased some due to some additional counseling and a change in counselor, as well as additional participants. Clerk of State Court, we had, going into the budget 2022, we had a plan for State Court. It was a plan. It was modified throughout the year, and then in July of 2023, the fiscal year 2023, we'll have the actual operations of that court. So District Attorney, we also received another ARPA grant for the judicial system received an ARPA grant in the amount of about $1.2 million. We're not going to incur all of that expense, but it was to catch up on the backlog of cases, and so that's where some of the additional cost in the court system came from, specifically this one with the district attorney. Public Defender State Court, so we added a couple of departments for the court system. We added a public defender for State Court. We added a solicitor general this year, and then we added the State Court itself. The coroners, they're based on cases. DOT has, every year you have large asphalt contracts. Those contracts are issued in the spring, and depending on where they are, what weather's done will determine whether or not they have completed those contracts. Going into this fiscal year, we had, I apologize, going into this fiscal year, we had about $10.7 million in purchase orders that were outstanding going into fiscal year 2022. So that increased their budget sum, and they overall came in under that amount of budgeted funds, but 6.9 of the 7.9 belonged to DOT, so those are in large contracts. Recycling had a tire grant. Bus services, senior centers, those have small increases. Those are primarily due to increase in fuel and some increase in maintenance cost. The airport had a couple of large contracts that you approved throughout the year. Those were some planning for construction. Those were some engineering, as well as the... Those were some engineering, as well as the, sorry, I thought I had it written down here, but their apron expansion project was, was a little bit, was around 900,000. It was approved by the board, and so this just encompasses the, the expanse for that. Outside of that, that gets the majority of the changes, the adjustments that we have seen. What I'd like to go back to now is to talk about the prior year fund balance. So in your original budget, you had a budget of 1.9 million dollars. Again, I mentioned that you had 10 million dollars of POs or written encumbrances that rolled over. And you had some additional costs throughout the year. On here, I have an estimated amount of 6.7 million dollars. I will tell you that you're not going to spend that. If you look at the report here on the estimated year-to-date budget report, and you turn to page six, the third column, the actual, will give you the year-to-date budget. There are a few things that are not included in here, but you're actually, should add to your fund balance this year and not actually spend it all. Just keep in mind that the 7.9 that you have already obligated that move into the 2023 budget from the 2022 budget. There's a lot of moving pieces. I apologize for that. I don't know how to better explain it.
You did a great job, Tabitha.
Was it recognizably more difficult with all the things going on with ARPA?
Yes, sir.
Would expect it to be so. Any other questions?
That's all I have. Unless you have questions, or if I've left something out that you would like to be added, then.
Everybody good? Okay. Thank you, Tabitha. Well, that's the conclusion of regular business this morning, public participational non-agenda items. We have two gentlemen and one lady. We're gonna let ladies go first here with Christina Johnson. Would you like to go first? The topic is voting machines.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I thank you for your time and attention. My name is Chris Johnson, or Christina, Chris. I only got Christina if I was in trouble when I was a kid. I've worked the election polls here at this precinct many times and served in several different of the work areas. Today, I would like to share with all of you some instances that I experienced concerning the security of our election process. The first one was a presidential election 2020. That day, I was assigned to the voting machine area. It consisted of informing voters which machines were open and available and showing voters where to insert the card if assistance was needed. Usually, at the end of the day, we were required to close the voting machines down and print the long tapes out of the machines and post them on the windows there in the precinct. After the polls were closed, we were told that evening not to close the machines down ourselves. The precinct manager motioned to two gentlemen that were standing close to the side door, and they would be closing the machines down that night. They were dressed in Navy work uniforms. I can, I can still see that in my mind. I did not recognize them from the day. Who were they? No one shared that information. But after a 15-hour workday, I thought, that's kind of unusual, but I'm tired, and that hot shower and comfy bed is calling. So we went on home. A couple of days later, when the election results seemed to be questionable, I remembered the gentleman who closed the machines down. And my thoughts were, if our credit cards, social media accounts, and/or our computers could be hacked or manipulated, why would these machines be any different? To deny this possibility could have happened would be equivalent to wearing rose-colored glasses. The second instance was January 2021, the election runoff. During a December girls' trip that some friends and I were on, we were sitting around before the day got started, and one of the girls shouted, "Y'all have got to see this." Her cousin had moved from Georgia to Ohio five years prior. She had taken a picture of a mail-in ballot she received in the mail for the January runoff. The ballot was definitely unsolicited. I saw the picture of the ballot with her Ohio address on it. We would have those rose-colored glasses on again if we thought this was an isolated instance. We can only guess how many of these were mailed to people who were not legal Georgia voters or residents. The third instance was primaries 2022, just this spring. I was assigned to the seniors and handicapped entrants. A gentleman entered and requested a paper ballot very loudly. But I sincerely think he was not there to harm anyone, but just extremely frustrated because he did not trust that his vote would count for his intended candidate. The manager and officer on duty came over and spoke with him and calmed him down. And after that, I told him I understood his frustration, but please vote anyway. That way, you will have done what you can do. He did vote, and then he left peacefully. These three instances, I have personally real-time observed. They are not hearsay. My neighbor's cousin's sister didn't tell me that. But the bottom line with this for me, it's enough to personally doubt that our elections are not fair and secure. If I feel this way, there are thousands of other Paulding County voters who feel the same way. My questions to all of you are, what actions have been taken to remove the Dominion machines from this county? What actions have been taken to ensure that former Georgia residents are not receiving unsolicited mail-in ballots? And if no actions have been taken, what barriers are preventing us from moving forward to restore the voters and your constituents that voted for you to be their voice and have faith in our elections being honest and fair? I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Chris Johnson. Mr. Tim Sudris.
Thank you, commissioners. Tim, Tim too got on to me last month because I wanted to go last, and he said, "We have to do the sandwich approach. We have to have bread, and then we have to have meat, and then we have to have bread at the end." So we're doing the sandwich approach today. He says, "I'm too negative, so I have to be in the middle." So today, I'm gonna try, try to have a sweeter sandwich for you guys. I just want to give you an update. You know what's going on across the state and across the nation. As of right now, we've got 50 counties who are doing the same thing that we're doing today, speaking against the machines to their county commissioners and to their election boards. Another thing we want to do is we want to encourage everybody to vote. We're not against voting. We have an election coming up in November. We encourage everybody to turn out to vote, no matter what method we have to use or if it's a machine or not. Last week, I got the privilege of going to two other county commissioner meetings. I went to Cherokee, and I went to Fulton. We had a guest speaker come into town. He's touring the East Coast. His name is Professor David Clements. He's a machine expert. He's been speaking in New Mexico, where he lives, to the county commissioners. And getting the county commissioners there have the right to vote on the method, and they also are the ones that certify the elections. So he's gotten two of the counties there to overturn using the machines, and they voted them out. So he's touring the East Coast. He had some free days. He was in Chattanooga last Tuesday, and so we contacted him and said, "Cherokee County has a commissioners meeting at 6 o'clock, can he come to that?" So he, he drove down, we met him. We went into Cherokee County Commissioners Meeting last Tuesday with 300 people. They have this huge amphitheater, beautiful building for their county meetings. But it doesn't compare to the, to what we have. Their audio visual is real limited and lacking. We couldn't hear the commissioners talking there, way up high on these pedestals and all that stuff. But anyway, they were gracious to us. They allowed the public to give up their speaking time, 15 minutes of their time to allow this gentleman to do a little presentation. And he did a great job with them. Standing ovation. So it was a good meeting. They decided, they've decided to do a letter to the legislators to ask them to get rid of the QR code in January in the legislative session. So then we, the next morning, Fulton County was meeting, and that was at 10 o'clock. So we drove down there, had him to speak. They only gave him two minutes to speak. So, but that was a different event. Fulton County opens with a prayer to an unknown god. That was different. I've never been in something like that before. Then they honored a transvestite as man of the year. I was just, and they clapped, and they applauded, and it was, I was in a different world. But whenever the Fulton, we had 50 people there. Whenever the people, public got to speak and we clapped, Rob Pitts knocked on the gavel and told us to be quiet, no applause. But it was okay to applaud for the transvestite. We don't want that coming to Paulding County. Rigged elections have consequences. And we can see that those people are not elected every year. They can't be. It's just not happening. But anyway, we went from there to Cummings. My time's up. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sudris. Mr. Tim Estes, is this Tim two, I guess?
Tim two, that's right.
Good job, Tim. He does a lot of work for the whole state of Georgia. But good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Carmichael and all the commissioners here. Thank you for hearing our concerns again. And we will continue until we see some sort of results. I'm proud to be a Paulding County, been here for 40 years. Lived here on McCready Drive. I've made my roots here. And I'm totally convinced that we have the best Board of Commissioners and Board of Elections in the whole state of Georgia, because I've also been to a lot of them throughout the state. I know you're tired of hearing about the voting machines probably about as much as I'm here telling you about it. But I feel confident that we don't trust them. 70% of Americans don't, and that's why we're bringing it to your attention again. And we will continue to do that because I want to live in a free country. It's been proven, all the evidence has been found. It's been funded by private patriots and Mike Lindell through this symposium. A $5 million reward was awarded for anybody that could disprove that the voting machines wasn't illegal. And we've even had no-takers, or it wasn't even covered by the mainstream media. We had the 2,000 mules. We've had Judge Amy Totenberg in October 2020, the rule that the machines were illegal. And there's been many more cases, if you want to research them and get them out there. I personally worked with our Board of Elections, did a cost analysis and found out it's costing Paulding County a little over twice as much using those machines of our taxpayer than it would be for paper ballots. Machines can be manipulated, and has been proven over and over again. And I think most of y'all probably agree after talking to you personally. No matter what the outcome is, we have no idea. We know what we want it to be, but we need to get out and vote on election day. We need to do it in person. We need to work harder than we've ever done. If we do it in person, it don't give enough time for the machines to be manipulated. And I know that automobiles don't hurt and kill people. It's the law-breaking driver that is behind the wheel. And I know the machines are only doing what they are guided or driven to do. Having the machines is allowing the law-breaking, the crooked, the evil, the greedy politicians to get what they want, not what the people want. I'm totally convinced of that. We've been using the wrong verbiage to y'all, and I apologize. We've been saying, "Get rid of the machines, get rid of them." And you're saying it's not our responsibility as Secretary of the State, and you're right. We've tried that, and he has ignored you. He's ignored the people, and he's ignored everybody else. Can you ask yourself why he's ignoring that? I think, what I think, I think that the crooked politicians using the machine to manipulate the outcome are used for their reelection security. And there's a lot of money in it. You follow the money. My goal and my prayers unite together to get rid of the machines. But I do know you have the power to get rid of them, not use them, not to get rid of them, but not use them in Paulding County. Let's get back to the Constitution. Let's follow it. Let's have one-day voting. Let's get back to paper ballots, and let's elect godly leadership in our government that concerned about the people and not follow the money, follow morality. Get the people that are American first. Get statesmen running this country and on our boards that don't put their self-interest first over the people. Flood the polls in November. Let's get out and vote, and let's bring this country back to patriots that love this country. Thanks a lot.
Just say I do appreciate all three of you being here. And it's fine with me if you come every meeting. Comments from commissioners is where we are on the agenda. I'll just start out by saying, on October the 8th, so that's less than a month, right? There's an event called Ride for Wishes, and I want it to go out livestream to people who watch at home and to know what a great cause this is for kids that wouldn't be able to go to Disney World or whatever their, their wish of choice is. Ride for Wishes will be October the 8th. Our staff gets involved in running that. Frank Baker, county manager, has led that for several years now. And I get to put about eight bikes in the back of my pickup truck and bring a bunch of grandchildren to ride on the trail. It's a lot of fun, goes for a great cause. Put that on your calendar, everyone, October the 8th. everyone, Oc- October the eighth.
Okay. I want to say thank you to Amazing Grace, I hope you're watching, um, except if you are in class, you need to be in class. I wore this shirt for her today, I told her that if she got it for me, I would wear it proudly for her. She's an exceptional little, well, big girl now, but um keep her in your prayers, this is new for her, being away at college and away from her mama, so just keep her in your prayers.
I think I have to abstain from that vote, Mama.
Yeah, I think you had a lot to do with it, Keith. Other comments? Brian, you've always got something good to say.
I would like to thank, uh, this past weekend, Paulding Meadows was in, and um, so when I first began in the Rotary Club, I either missed a meeting, or because I was young in the club, they voted me in to be the chair for the uh parking out there. So, and all the band members from East Paulding, South Paulding, and Paulding County High School actually helped to do the parking, to come together, to get all that done, and there, in the past, for a few years, the kids, um, it was challenging to get good help out there with them, but for the last few years, I don't know what it is, it's a great turnout, we're good kids, and not able to tell every one of them thank you, but if, hopefully you're not watching because you're in school, but maybe if you're a parent of the uh kid in the band for either one of those schools, I really want to say thank you and tell your kids thank you if you come out and help, so.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone too, let's lift the families of those two deputies from Cobb County that got killed this past week up. Deputy Jonathan Koleski and Deputy Marshall Urban, um, I'm not exactly sure what the funeral arrangements are, but I, I think they're this week, but uh it's just been a, a heavy week with the anniversary, September the eleventh, and uh just need to remember to lift those families up, gonna be a very difficult time for them. And I think it's only fitting that we award the Medal of Valor to our, our own fireman here in the county, I mean, I think we live in the best county in the state of Georgia, and our public safety officers and all these guys, I mean, that's, they're the ones that let us sleep well at night, I can't speak highly enough of these guys, so just remember those families this week, thank you.
One of the Cobb officers, or both of them, live in Paulding County? I know one of them did, he was friends with a granddaughter. You good? All right, we uh have no executive session today, uh, and I'll entertain a motion to I'll make a motion to adjourn any moment, one second? This is tough getting out of the room here.
I'll say it.
Okay, you got a motion and then a second by Commissioner Stover, others in favor say aye. Opposed, we are adjourned, see you at two o'clock.